So, we're gonna call to order the February 14th zoning Board of Appeals monthly meeting. First matter of business is approval of the minutes from the January 10th regular meeting. Did anyone have any comments on those? Did you get a chance to read them?
I wasn't here, so...
I did.
Any comment?
No.
Okay. Can we make a motion to approve all three at once? Or should we do each one?
No, because I didn't sit on two of them.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, does someone want to make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 10th meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, okay. And then, approval of the minutes from the January 16th Surfside Crossing 40B public hearing. Anyone have any comments on those? Or everyone get a chance to read them?
I glanced at them.
I don't know, they look fine today.
Yeah, they look fine to me, too.
So, does someone want to make the motion to approve those?
Show move.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then, we have the minutes from the January 23rd, 2019 Surfside Crossing 40B public hearing. Does anyone have any comments on those?
Nope.
I didn't either. Does someone want to make a motion to approve those?
Make the motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. So, moving on to old business. We have application 20-18 Surfside Crossing LLC, Surfside Crossing 40B. Arthur, are you speaking for this one? Okay. And I just want to clarify that the primary purpose of this hearing is limited to the scheduling of the next continued public hearing to a location date and time certain, and no substantive discussion is planned. So where are we, Eleanor, on that?
So, we have confirmed date and availability and reservation for March 11th in cafeteria. The other four have down available. And it would be at 4:30 start.
Okay. Does anyone have any objection to that time?
That's our understanding, and we would request that it be continued to that time and place.
Okay. So would someone want to make a motion to continue the Surfside Crossing 40B public hearing to March 11th at the Nantucket High School Cafeteria, correct? At 4:30 PM?
I'll make that motion.
Does anyone want a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You have to do a roll call.
Oh, sorry. So we'll do roll call. We'll start with you, Ed.
Aye.
And Jeff.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Myself. Aye.
Aye.
Lisa. And Jim.
Aye.
And Mark, you're not on this one, right? Okay. Okay. So that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, and Ed, that's all we need you for?
I think so.
Okay.
So, I'll sign off. If you need me again, I'm here.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay. Bye. Okay.
You don't sound good.
I'm not.
You're not very well.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay. So, we are... We are now moving to... So do we... I don't need to do anything for the... Do we need to do anything for the ones that are continued?
You should just approve.
The continued? Okay. So...
I can explain why. So like, what if you...
Sorry. Okay. So we should... So for 2318, Adam Ross and Emma Ross, 50 Aqua Wa Avenue. So we just approve the continue?
Yes. Let me just be on the... I'd sit on it. I don't know if I need to do... They can be a four.
I'll make the motion to continue.
Okay. Does someone want a second that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So now, we're moving on to... 0119 Stephen W. Russo, trustee, 43A Union Street, represented by Arthur Reed.
He skipped.
I... Because I... Oh, did I skip one?
Nope.
Where? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It was at the top of the page. I'm sorry. I was thinking that was fast. Sorry. 5018 Milton C. Roland and Roberta M. Roland, 2 Cottage Court, John Brusher.
Good afternoon. For the applicant's attorney, John Brusher, this is... This will be our third public hearing on the matter. Just to refresh the board's memory, at the end of the last public hearing, we had discussed all some of the intricacies and nuances of the application, and what was requested from the applicant was a letter from the abutter who had wrote an initial letter. And yesterday afternoon, we received a letter for her, let's see, permission to go on her property in order to complete the proposed work. That letter was sent to the administrator, and I believe you all have it, although I don't think that made it to your packets. And so, just again, just to refresh the board's memory, the request is for a special permit relief to alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure and change of use to a pre-existing non-conforming structure by effectively merging a pre-existing non-conforming shed and garage into a garage and studio and adding approximately 30 feet of ground cover from the setback. I believe that the proposed alterations will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and a special permit relief is available. And as I said, we have the letter from the abutter, and my clients are here to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions about this one?
We got an email yesterday.
It wasn't long, right? That would be great.
Actually, I have a copy here. Yes, so this was from Ms. Priscilla Johnson. She said, "Yes, I assume this is to get my permission to do work on my side, one warrant. Please note there should be a gutter, proper drainage put on my side of their garage-studio as well, because after the rainstorm, there's always excessive water due to the gutters, due to the lack of gutters/downspouts." To which Mr. Roland responded, "Hi, Priscilla. Thank you very much for responding. I'll put a gutter on your side and have rainwater routed down onto my property."
Okay.
Once that water gets routed onto your property, is it gonna stay on your property? Should you put it into some sort of an infiltrator?
Well, it'll go to either end. It's kind of a long building, so it'll go to either end on the south end. It's gonna hit source near where my driveway is, and then it'll get washed right to the street. On the north end, we may have to provide some sort of a catch basin or something, but it'll, you know, be... An effort will be made to make sure it doesn't get back on their property.
I think that would be good, yeah.
Does anyone else on the board have any comments?
No, I think we covered it last meeting, so here's your forward. I'll make a motion to approve the application as requested.
I mean, there's really nothing...
That's already been... I assume that that would be in the decision.
We'll read...
Yeah, that's fine.
Because it's in... It's in this...
R O A H.
So, and do we... So it's just the mortuary room that we normally do?
Yes.
What are the dates on that?
Memorial Day to Labor Day, and then no further extension. Those are typical.
That's what we've been doing, right?
Yeah. Then I think we should just echo those.
Yeah. And I think there should be something in there about that the applicant offered up that he would make sure the water stays on his property.
So if we can just memorialize?
No.
What?
Yeah.
And is anyone in the public here to speak about this one?
I'm the neighbor.
Okay.
So, I just... It's just the water. You guys, that's my concern, because you know that after it rains, a lot of water on your side.
So does this satisfy your concerns?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Because I spoke to him, he...
Great. So I agree...
Is that your name for the record, please? Oh, Victoria Johnson. Priscilla Johnson.
So, I agree with Michael. Let's memorialize that in the decision. So the motion's been made and seconded.
Who's second? I'm sorry.
I think...
Right.
Karen?
I did. Karen...
Karen made the motion. Michael seconded.
And I guess I changed his motion, and he's accepted the changes.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
So, one... Jeff, did you vote?
I can.
I think you should. One, two, three, four, five. So, I think everybody else said aye.
Unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, you, John. He's so charming.
He's so charming.
He's so charming. Okay. So next, we are going to... Let's see. We have 0119 Stephen W. Russo, trustee, 43A Union Street Trust, represented by Arthur Reed. This is a request to continue without opening to March 14th. So do we have to approve that request to continue since it's not...
It's not been opened.
So we don't have to do anything, right?
No.
Okay. So next...
Unless you have an issue with it.
Does anyone have an issue?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Next one is 0319 State of Nikki Estool, Edward Estool trustee, ECMJ nominee trust, Sarah F. Alger. That also is a request to continue without opening to March 14th. So we can just... Unless anyone has an issue? What?
The staff report says to February 14th.
I know. That was a mistake, I think. Yeah. It had today's date on it.
Where? On the staff report?
Yeah.
But that's fine. It's right on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so...
You know, if I do the staff report before I'm...
So next is 0419 Linda A. Yates, 21 Derrymore Road, represented by Steve Cohen. Mr. Cohen?
I'm not gonna be sitting on this.
Okay.
So, the other five on the board?
So, I guess we'll do the other... One, two, three.
No, no, that's... Is this way?
What? I think we're good, right? And we'll decide when we vote, right? Who's voting? But everyone will sit.
Okay. Works for me.
Okay.
Okay. So, this application is a little unusual, but I think hopefully you'll find it's reasonable. 21 Derrymore Lane, Road rather, is... Has its frontage of Derrymore, and it used to have to the west and to the north used to be Dartmouth. Dartmouth was a unconstructed paper road that the town took as part of the yard sale program back in 2014, and is in the process of distributing that. You guys may or may not know, you probably do know, or at least some of you, that those yard sale distributions are being held up by the land court engineering department, which is effectively a... Essentially a technical review. It's not a substantive review, but that review is, you know, they've got a pile of them. I think the town has more than 100 that are held up. They're the bane of Eleanor's existence. And for the record, she's nodding accordingly. And, you know, it's been five years, and the way the program is set up, the land automatically goes to the abutter, without question, as long as they want it, which of course, my client does. There had previously been a process where there were competitive bids, and they have abandoned that unless there's a situation in which there's a multiple abutters. But in this case, my client is the only abutter to this land. So, she has been holding off on her construction project, waiting for five years now to get that land, because it adds, you know, 15 feet by however longer lot is, and that is nice. In this particular case, what it would allow her to do is to take the house that she's had designed and approved by the HTC and slide it over enough that she could have a driveway on the side and have the parking in the back, instead of the current proposal, which is to have the house pushed back further and have parking in front with, you know, pull-in-back-out parking. And so, we're not... What we're looking to do is give permission to encroach into the setback. It's a five-foot setback. What we'd like to do is encroach three feet into the setback with the idea that when that land transfers, she would then have a 17-foot offset from the new property line, which is triple, more than triple the five feet that's required. We're not asking for any additional ground cover. We're not asking for any development that she wouldn't otherwise be allowed to do. We're just asking to have that house slide over a few feet. The neighbor to the north where the house is going supports it because it's her daughter, and that because of the 30-foot way that's currently there now, it's actually maybe 33 feet, you know, each property is gonna have more than... There's more than 40 feet between the houses. So sliding it closer doesn't, you know, create this butt-to-butt thing. Both properties are gonna have about 40 feet between the houses, which is, you know, fairly substantial and much more than what's in other properties in the area. The neighbor to the south also supports this because he likes the idea of the parking moving away from the street and not having this full impact, pull-out parking, and also he likes the idea, obviously, of the house shifting away from him. So this is the odd situation where the request for a setback encroachment actually helps move the house away from the abutter, not closer to the abutter, because that's the only... The only abutter to the south is the one we're moving away from, and the abutter to the north, A, it's her daughter who supports it, and B, has 40 feet between the structures. So that is where we are. We ask you to give relief to allow for the three-foot setback encroachment as provided. I know that there's an abutter here or someone who lives on Delaney, which is actually behind... There's a property behind my client, and then a road, and then across the street from us. And he expressed to me that he was concerned about this being used for additional development, so I'll let him speak when it's his turn, but I do want to say that I think he might misunderstand how the yard sale project program works, because he expressed to me concerns about this being allowed to have additional development and those kind of things, and the reality is, is that when the road was there, my client had the ability to subdivide. By going through the yard sale process, it has eliminated that road as a... As frontage for subdivision, and now because it's municipal land, it can't be used for frontage purposes. And when it becomes private yard, it obviously can't be used for frontage purposes. So if you look at the plan that's submitted, my client is proposing a house that takes up essentially the whole lot. There's an area in the back that's reserved later for a cottage. So there's no additional development or subdivision or anything that's gonna happen because of this. And in fact, this process eliminates what could have been a, you know, a two or three lot subdivision by eliminating that road. So I would ask you to consider this as a positive for the neighborhood. If you have any questions, we'll have an answer.
The additional layer that they would...
Yeah.
That create any additional rights to subdivision?
No. Well, so it's... Yeah, it's only... It's only 15 feet wide, so it doesn't create enough new frontage for subdivision. Yeah. So that's... The first answer is no mathematically. It doesn't work. And the second answer is that it's a standard condition in the town's yard sale deeds that you can't subdivide based upon the additional square footage and frontage. So you... If you could subdivide before, you still can, but if you can't... You can't use yard sale land to create a subdivision typically.
The process doesn't end with the land court creating a right or... You still get town things to be the way.
Correct. Yeah.
And it... I noticed that it would still be up in the air because they have a term of price.
I don't know about that.
I guess...
The town use... The town has its real estate assessment committee, I think they call it now, and that committee has essentially looks at all these yard sales and determines, A, what the price should be based on essentially a tax assessment number. It's usually running $2 to $4 a square foot or something like that. And then they also look to see whether or not there are any public rights that either should be preserved or private rights that should be preserved or implemented. So if there's waterfront property and they want to make sure there's a one-bit beach easement, or that there's easement for a staircase or access to the beach or something like that, which isn't the case here, and to make sure if there are any abutters who should have a driveway reservation, or if there's a need for emergency vehicle access or something like that. So they go through that process to make sure that the town's not just giving away what it might need.
Hi, May. Just a quick question.
Sure.
In terms of the yard sale, I want to figure a look at this. It currently is compliant, overly compliant with the lot size of 5,000 square feet. With the addition of the 2,000 and change yard sale parcel, it would come to the rest of 740 plus. They cannot subdivide unless they hire... But even though it becomes sub divisible because it would have, but not... It would still have to go get approved from Select One, would be a public hearing. They just... It's part... The deeds are restricted, so like you said, you cannot subdivide unless... If you were allowed by right prior to the acquisition, you subdivide, that's a different method. So that would not have been the case, but it would not be your case here. The other thing is that the structure of the massing, I don't see how they could ever possibly do it. It would be a tough subdivision to do with this structure.
If the house was...
Pretty much smacked up.
Right.
Right.
If the house was previously built, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. You can't... I mean, the whole point of the relief is for this house, and if you put in this house, it prevents the subdivision based on geometry.
I'm just making sure.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it. It's a good question. So what... Just from a process point of view, when the land court approves the technical, you know, measurements and calculations on the plan and gets back to Eleanor and says, "Okay, we're good to go on this," they would issue a certificate of title to the town, and then the town would do a distribution to the abutters of these lots based on whatever price and terms the real estate committee recommends to us.
The land bank, once they approve it?
Land court, yeah.
If you set all of that nature bay out there, this additional...
That's right. Yeah. The town has taken it, so technically they own it, but they don't have a certificate of title yet, and that's the process that drives on for years.
And Eleanor, we have granted variance relief in the past for this type of situation where it's in the pipeline?
We have for... I cited the name of the... There was one, another client...
62 Wall Street. We did that.
Dick Street. Yeah.
There were modifications to that as they built. There were some traditional things, but the initial variance was somewhat similar. And...
It was for setback as opposed to coverage, I'm pretty sure.
That one... It was ground cover and setback.
And setback.
And it was the R1 one as well.
Yeah.
It was... That was fairly similar. And then the other one on Main Street was more to get the structure out of the way from the road and people, but it was a variety of variance for prompt setbacks. I may be started as well. And we... Yeah. There may be others out there, but those two problems.
Yeah. I think you did it on one of Arthur's clients on Eel Point Road that was moving a house, and they wanted to be in the paper road.
It was...
What?
That was withdrawn.
Okay.
But yes, they did come to that.
Okay. Does anyone have...
I'm a little confused.
Sure.
The HTC-approved plans show the building on or within the setback, correct?
Outside of the setback.
Right.
Right.
Because the parking is in the front, and what they're trying to do is get a driveway now. If you look at the Bracken Plan, to the back, and that forces the house to go page left, whatever direction it's north.
Like a page 151.
If we slide the house to the left.
Well, yeah. I'm just a little confused. I mean, this approval was only from a month ago.
Right.
So you're thinking changed in the last month? You're gonna go before... You're gonna read it? You're gonna...
Well, the house was only approved at the HTC a month ago. That's right.
Right.
And then, when the architect called me and said, "Hey, do you think we could possibly move the house three feet to the north?" And I said, "Well, you'd need variance relief to do that, but because of the unusual situation here of this paper road, maybe." But I know that...
And what's gonna happen to the parking in the back that's appeasing the neighbor when you decide to build a second dwelling in the pool?
The plan already accommodates that.
How though? Where are you... That was my question.
How does it accommodate that?
Where are you gonna put the secondary dwelling now that you have this?
It shows on this map. I think it's still fits, and the parking would be going like right there.
What page?
159.
So, the... I can answer that question. I asked the architect the same thing.
Yeah.
Jeff just reminded me.
It's like it goes right there.
The plan for the cottage is to wait until the land court finishes the... Its process, and then we have the additional land, and so that would allow that building to move 15 feet.
Right. Right. Right.
So if you look at the acquisition that... Of the paper road, it gives you a tremendous amount of land that doesn't have that... Exists now.
Right. Okay. So do you need to go back to the HTC then at all, or no?
To move three feet, probably technically, but yeah. But not the design... The design of the house would stay the same.
Just for car spitting or whatever?
Yeah. Well, we need to go back for the new driveway, and we need to go back to change the location of the house.
And will they, they'll, will they approve that at the, at the HDC? I guess if we've.
If you give. They would actually approve it even without the relief, because they don't care if it's any compliant.
One question related to the future steps after getting the relief he sought. When the homeowner or architect goes in to apply for a permit. He can't apply for a permit until that land is being sourced into the property. Because the house is now two feet in, three feet in the setback. And you can't have any windows in front of the house.
Yeah.
You have to fireproof it, you have to do all these other things.
Yeah.
That you don't leave code on.
So, there's an answer to that.
How do you expect the building department to issue a permit in this location until you've absorbed the limit?
That's a good question, I asked the same question, because it's the, I had a client several years ago who got burned on that issue, and, uh, she used the pun, and I, it's the first warning I put out now. We're gonna end up with a problem. Uh, the answer is that there's an exception to that rule in the building code that allows for, um, if there's land abutting that side that is not residential or commercial land, um, then it doesn't count, in other words, there's no fire, isn't it, the point of that rule is so that your fire, the, the fire in your house doesn't catch your neighbor's house in fire. So, so I have several clients since then who have obtained relief from that issue based on the idea that their, the setback abouts a road or a park or something. Yeah, no, I, I, it's a good question, because no one wants a side of their house with no window on it, or a door or whatever. But because, because it's town-owned land currently, that can't be developed, and because it's going to become private land, it qualifies for that exception.
So you write an opinion letter as part of it?
Yeah, 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 and I've, I've done it before, and the building commissioner has, uh, accepted that in, in essentially the same exact situation where there's a, a road or a park or whatever.
Um, I think we should hear from Eleanor.
Uh, Joe, I'm Delaney, I'm on the other side, I'm not quite sure why I received the letter, but I just, there's so much development in this area. Um, I, I just feel like the language is telling these people that they can have a two-foot setback, you know, that what's the rush on, on building a home, uh, you know, how much longer is it gonna be? I just, I'm watching these houses go up, go up, go up, and they're as close as close can be. To give someone with two foot setback, just to rush the project along, one example.
I, I also see one issue that maybe it's not an issue, but you're, you're showing a, um, window well on that side, and that would then be over that property line. Well, it shows up in the elevation. Which I don't think you, we can't, we're not gonna bless that, window well going over the property line.
It's, that's not the HDC, we, I'm not trying to say they can't build their house, I'm just saying that watching this neighborhood transformation is going. I've been analyzing houses sixty-six, and now I reshank, redid the window, and it's the same pretty little house. You know, a little engine that could over there, so I'm trying to be as, as vocal as I can be about these little setback issues.
So I think the, the, um, you know, the reason that we, we are entertaining this, if it wasn't for the yard sale and the additional, um, fifteen feet that they were going to get.
But what's the rush?
Well, I, I think the rush is, I, I don't think it's a rush, I think, I, I think it's been in process for five years. Um, the, the, the land court is, um, you know, is very slow about this, um, this process, and it's unfortunate. And I agree with you in some ways that, you know, let's not put the cart before the horse here, she doesn't own, or whoever doesn't own this, um, this strip yet, and things could happen. But it really is, you know, it's a fait accompli, it'll be, it'll be done, it just takes forever. Um, and we have, as Eleanor pointed out in our staff report, we have granted this type of relief before.
I believe in less dense locations, I don't think you really, they're, they're filling these lots up really fast. I mean, the, the two lots that were processed here from my house are now three lots each, three houses each, and the two lots that were processed here from my house. Uh, you know, and, and this is directly abutting the one that was approved to go in, and subsequently would went right into second, you know, they, they all approved these three houses to go in, and, and I think it's numbering ten, uh, the other deeds for the small deeds property, and they grant them. And they, now it's on, now it's on the market because it's approved for three houses, it's not like they, they got approved, and they're like, oh, great, right, put a house for our kids. They're making money off of all of us, you know?
Right.
I, I just.
Well, was that subdivided, um, was the zoning change, is the zoning, it must have been changed there, that larger lots were, were able to be subdivided?
They, they were able to be subdivided, I just, if, if, watching this all happen, everyone's going to be.
I understand.
Variance if, if you grant a variance, right, I, I don't, it's a local person.
Well, this is an unusual circumstance, I think, to grant the variance.
Right, I mean, it's, again, it's, it's old.
Happens in the future, though, because, you know, if it doesn't go through, and you're two feet off the, of the setback.
Can't be, can't occupy the house.
Well, I mean. Right, the town has.
We're making a contingent on getting a certificate of occupancy, I guess.
Yeah, that, you have done that to town. Um, I, I don't wanna interrupt, but I do wanna answer a couple of questions that came up. Um, just, so, Lee, so your question about the.
Window well?
Window well, obviously, you don't have to put this condition in, because it's legally true anyway, but you could ask for a confirmation, you know, like a site survey certification or something, that we're not crossing the property line there.
Okay, but it's only gonna be able to be a, a foot and a half deep, because you're two, two point seven feet away from the property line.
Yeah.
Ten inch wall, or eight inch wall, whatever. It's not, well, it, it doesn't, I guess, need to meet the egress, because you have windows on the other side, but I'm just making the point that.
Yeah.
Maybe cut a foot off the length of that room, or so that you can get the window well to fit within your property, it might make more sense.
Change it later, I'll, I'll raise that with the architects.
Right, but we can't bless anything that's.
I'm not gonna bless anything that's gonna go over the property line.
No.
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, you know, obviously, we don't legally have the right to do that. So I.
Right.
Can, address that, um, because it, there's no option where we do do it. Um, in terms of the other property that, that, um, I'm sorry, that, that Joe is referring to, that, when Dartmouth used to be a road, the, because this is only five thousand square foot zoning, these lots, these oversized lots easily could be cut up into these smaller lots and, and more heavily developed. So the concern that he has is legitimate, it's just not current with the situation, because the taking actually eliminated this private road and made it into municipal land now, and it'll become private yard later. So that subdivision opportunity is not available anymore. So the concern about this allowing for additional density is not, um, is not accurate. And also, it doesn't, we're not actually changing the house, it's the same house, essentially in the same place, it's only moving three feet over to allow for greater, you know, for the parking to move, but I think that.
I'm more concerned with the future than just protecting the house.
Right, but, yeah, I, I think to your point, you could build this house exactly where you have approval to do it, and leave the parking in the front.
In the front, yeah, so it, it's sort of the same density.
It could be built tomorrow.
My client's plan uses up the lot in a way that prevents, you know, more, more, you know, uh, subdivision and stuff like that. Um, you know, with a house and a cottage and a pool, it's, it's one lot instead of more. So, I think it's a legitimate concern, I get why he's watching all this stuff going up in the neighborhood, and it doesn't feel the same, and it feels more congested and everything, but I don't think that the relief we're looking for here does that, and I also don't think that there's any precedent that you're setting, where someone could come in and take this variance if you grant it, and turn that into much more development. You know, frankly, I don't think you would grant a permit that allowed for much more development. So there's both no, there's no, it's, it's not an adverse precedent, and you're not held by it, and it's not what we're doing. And I don't think you'd give it to anybody else, if I came in and said, let me use this land so I can get more houses and more lots, and more bigger houses, whatever, I'm sure you'd turn me down, so. That's not where I stand. And this house, by the way, is only, I think, fifteen hundred and thirty-seven square feet, it's, you know, relatively modest.
So Eleanor, on the one that we did that was similar to this, we did grant it, uh, board granted it.
Yeah, sixty-two Wall Street, I didn't said because it was my client, but we, they did grant.
So on this one, I, I, I understand all issues around, but I have a big problem about this, the substantial hardship question is. Trying to get my head around that, is there a hardship here? You know, normally we see this in different contexts, not fifty-five.
Sure.
But on the other one, we, we find there was a hardship that they have to wait to build their house. I just, I mean, this is a hardship.
Maybe if we, if we reference other decisions, we should probably have a copy of those decisions as part of the package.
But, but you're right, Eleanor, that, that lot angled, so the setback affected where the house could be placed, there was something where the Dick Street setback.
It, it wasn't quite an L shape, but it was.
It was odd.
The, the piece that was coming from Dick Street was gonna regularize the lot a little better.
Yeah.
Um, and so it allowed us to change the shape of the house for setback issues, and it also, um, allowed us to have, I think that the board allowed for a small amount of additional ground cover, and part of that addition, there was actually two decisions, the first one was the shape and location of the house, and the second one, we came in and asked for a little more ground cover with a deal, essentially that no CO until the transfer takes place.
Well, my recollection is that the house met all the zoning, and we wanted to come in and put a bay window on the front, which put over the ground coverage until we got Dick Street.
That's, yeah, it wasn't a bay window, it was a.
We didn't, we met the zoning prior to that little piece getting added.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, and the, and the board's determination in that case was, uh, essentially that, um, no CO until the land transfer takes place.
Right.
To, as a way to sort of hold it up and incentivize making sure it happens.
Now, on the A Street, I don't recall that being a, a paper street.
Is that?
That had to do with an erosion issue, I think, not.
It did, and that's, there is a paper street in that case, but that's, they were moving the house out of the danger zone. Into the front red center.
Yeah, but I think they have justified it by asserting that they would become compliance once the transfer happened. Which hasn't happened yet. Again, stuck in the line.
Why, why is it, why is it listed as special permit or variance, didn't I see that someplace? Two options.
No, that was the application.
Oh, that was the other one, sorry.
Yeah, this is just a variance.
Yeah, no, I see it now.
So again, you know, my client has waited five years, and that's not, you know, terrible for you, but she'd like to get going. In this case, the abutter to the south appreciates that she's moving away.
Yeah.
The abutter to the north, uh, is gonna have a massive, I mean, the person she's moving closer to, they're still gonna have thirty-odd feet between them.
Do you have any sense of when this land court decision's gonna come out?
Where is it right now?
You, you wanna guess at that one?
Uh, well, we do have a bunch go through last year, we have a good, good number, there was progress made, but some of the logjam has been broken up. Um, it's getting caught in the, the net of the examiner's. So first it goes to the survey department, they go over the plans to find who's wrong, generally that's a pretty efficient process. It's when it goes to the land examiner's department, it's literally stuck, because he's overwhelmed that department. It's literally a bureaucratic, you know, overload, I put that in sound quotes, that, everything is getting stuck there.
Would you be willing to wait for issuance of the CO until you get, until you get this land court?
Yeah, yes.
You would, you would, so you would, so you would not occupy the premises?
Well.
What if this condition of it happened?
Well, that's, you know, that's, that's my point, what if it doesn't happen?
Right.
So.
They're not gonna move the house, and they come back and say, oh, well.
That's a hardship right there.
On, on that second, uh, it's not typically a condition to have a CO to occupy the house, in fact. I think it's more rare to have one in most cases. But I think, I think the reason why the board includes that condition is not to prevent occupancy so much as to have a, a placeholder that forces, you know, some sort of confirmation of the compliance later, that, you know, when, when we, we can't get that CO, and you need the CO for financing, or a sell, or, or those kind of things, so there's always a trigger to go back and clean it up.
And regarding a sale, would you be willing to put a deed restriction on this lot if any further future subdivision? I mean, I only bring it up because, you know, because it's part of your argument.
Yeah, I, I mean.
You know, you, you know, what you're doing is, is, is rendering the lot not subdivided.
I, I think what would be fair, Jeff, um, and I'll sort of, during this, and my client too, is that we would say that there would be no subdivision as long as the variance is being acted on, if someone wanted to demolish the house and not use the, the, you know, then it shouldn't be prevented. You know, that said, the town's yard sale deed is gonna have its own language, but if you wanted to include in the posi, in the opinion and in your decision, that as long as the variance is being used, that the lot can't be subdivided.
I, I, I thought you said that it could not be subdivided, that there was something in the bylaw that said that if this yard sale land is allowing it.
No, they can't, you, you can't use the yard sale land to, 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 to create a subdivision.
Well, you are though, because, oh, well, because it's giving you the ground cover, or the lot area then to be able to subdivide without that yard, so you can't subdivide.
I think you already have the yard areas.
No, you don't, they're under, they're under ten thousand square feet, so they don't.
Yeah.
So how is it ever subdividable?
I, I don't think it currently is.
No, but with the new, with the new yard sale land, it would be able to be, although you said that the yard sale land can't be used towards making
Correct.
Something subdivided.
You can't qualify for subdivision using yard sale land in every yard sale deed I've seen. Unless you get a waiver from the board, just like. What, this from the select?
Board?
No, the select. Which I don't see them giving, but, but if you wanted to, well, suspenders that and put.
We would just put that into our decision.
As long as the variance is being relied on, no subdivision, we could do that.
I think that makes sense, Jeff. Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as variance is being relied on, it's ruled, because once you acquire the land, that's when it will become zoning compliant with subdivision if the select will approve it. So the variance will become when you acquire yard sale.
Okay.
You would also have eleven thousand square feet change, therefore subdivide by one thirty-nine sixteen.
Well, not under the deed restriction, but.
Well, if there's.
Yeah. Well, so what public purposes serve then to have a restriction where there's a seventeen-foot setback where there were only five feet is required, so there's, there's no relief at that point.
Should we get a copy of whatever deed restriction would be part of this land?
Yeah.
And, and be able to look at it?
Yeah, if you want, if you want to.
You, you just said, if there is a deed restriction, so.
If you wanted to put in your decision that the applicant agrees, um, that that subdivision language will be in the, um, deed, I think we could probably do that. Does that sound kosher to you, Eleanor?
I'm sorry, I'm just thinking of a law of deed revision.
So that the deed would say in the face of a Stephen that there's a subdivision?
Yeah, that it would be, I mean, it's in, it's in essentially every deed that they do, but if you wanted us to put in the, in this decision that the, that the applicant agrees that the, to make sure that the yard sale deed is, is in there, or that language is in the yard sale deed. Certainly, something we could do.
Everything would be, it's, it's standard, there's a whole paragraph dedicated to not subdivide. You have to merge within twenty-four months, and you can't use this merger to subdivide. And again, if this were subdivided, we'll require to be activated, and that would be allowed by rights.
Right.
Listen, since it's not, it can never be.
And, and I will say there have been, I'm gonna say, since I've been acting with yard sale program, three, maybe four situations where, um, probably we're to come back and see that ability to subdivide, that they were allowed by right. So, you know, but they had to get this select word signed off.
And did the select word sign off on it?
Um, in two cases, I'm, yes, there was a lot of extra land, it was, it was not this.
The, yeah, it was where they already could have.
Yeah, there was one, one, one.
So it wasn't that the land, but you're right.
Relying on the new.
They weren't relying on the yard so far, so.
Right.
So the, in those cases, it was just released because it didn't need that land to do it.
What about parking, would you agree to keep the parking interior from the lot?
That's the point of this.
Yes.
Yeah, oh, you, you mean have that in a decision?
Yeah, that the, I, I think a simple way to do it would be that the parking would be behind the west face of the house, that, something like that.
There'd be, yeah, no parking on the.
No parking on Derry Moore Road.
On Derry, off of Derry Moore Road.
Yeah, sure.
Um, when you were saying no CO until the land court plan, you mean the merge land court, the the, the plan that has to get filed after they, like the perimeter plan?
Right.
I think that's what they mean, yeah.
Yeah. But what was the language in sixty-two Wall Street, you pointed that out just to see?
Oh, yeah. Okay, the conditions were, the usual, comply with the plan that was submitted, and then this is the key, the structures upon the premises shall not receive a certificate of occupancy until the, in this case, ground cover ratio is made conforming within the requirements of zoning level for this district, either by the acquisition of additional land, or the reduction of ground cover of structures. And then subsequently, after you allow a ground cover ratio not conforming, is made conforming, the ground cover ratio for the location shall not exceed. You all also stipulated that given twenty-eight percent.
Right, without coming back to the board, right?
Without coming back to the board, yeah. And I don't remember, I mean, I know that that went through, obviously, because the land got transferred at some point, so that, that taking went fairly quickly.
Uh, no, it took a couple, it took a few years.
Yeah, but not, not five.
Yeah, I mean, I have yard sale things that have been going on since two thousand and eleven, so there, and I don't know, Eleanor could tell you, there's more than a hundred of them in line.
So it seems like it's inconsistent in terms of.
It's just the land court one, the, the reported land, unregistered land one.
Oh, got it, yeah.
Some, some, sometimes it happens in eighteen months if it's unregistered land, if it's not land court land. What, or even quicker?
I don't really see the point of a CO.
Because they're gonna live in it anyway.
What are you gonna do if it doesn't happen? You're, you're creating hardship.
They would just have a hard time selling it, or, you know, they're.
Yeah.
Well, they can't get it, but you won't be able to get a CO without it, yeah.
Sure.
Can you just identify yourself for the thanks?
I'm Linda Yates, the owner of Twenty-One Derry Moore. Um, I, the thought comes to mind that what if you have to sell? When the gentleman mentioned Ten Delaney Road, which belonged to my parents. That was not sold by the Yates to make money, to take money away from anybody. It was sold to pay for my parents' healthcare, they both chose to die at home. And they needed round-the-clock healthcare for over six years. So, when, I don't know where the hardship in waiting for five years came from. It hasn't been a hardship to wait for five years. The hardship is in not understanding the minutia of navigating the process of building a home on Nantucket. Fortunately, I haven't had to go through, I was able to live in a home that my parents built by themselves. But that's what's difficult. And right now, I'm looking to purchase land. I have no terms in front of me to understand how much that's going to cost me so that I can simply move the house in a position that will avoid me from having to park on the road, or just off the road, so that I don't have to listen to a neighbor complain because I'm too close to his house, which he built exactly where he wanted it. So, it's not in the waiting, it's in the not understanding the process. And my concern is, if I build this house and I'm fortunate enough to live long enough to move into it, what if I have to sell it? What if something happens and I have to sell it, and I can't because I don't have a CO? So, if this is all a bargaining, I, I really need to understand the terms of it.
I, I don't think it's a bargaining thing, I just think we would normally not allow somebody to build in the setback without a special condition like this, of being able to purchase the property. If you didn't have the ability to buy this, uh, parcel D, you would never get the, you would, you would not get a variance built over the property.
I understand that.
So that's why it's not. So that's why it's not a quid pro quo, but it's.
Right. But at the same time, I have no control over the fact that I've been waiting.
Right, but, but the other op, so the other option for you is if, if it's a, it is a risk, um, calculation for you and if the risk isn't worth it, then you can choose to just wait until the land court issues.
I understand that. That much I understand.
Or build it the way.
I understand that as well.
Yeah.
But this is what I'm saying as far as the hardship is concerned and.
I don't, I.
And I appreciate that.
That's part of our.
The variance.
Standard to grant a variance and I'm not making light of, of, you know, it is a very subjective thing, what a hardship is. I'm just trying to get my, my.
Right, you mentioned that you had a hard time finding the hardship. So it's just the complication of, and especially not understanding like if this, then that, and not knowing what the then that is. That's where it's confusing. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who wants to speak to you, to you about this one?
Well, I, I think, I think, you know.
No, so I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but it, it is.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I think that there's no way that this variance will get granted without, without needing a CO.
I, I, I think.
Or excuse me, needing, needing the property to get the CO, excuse me.
So I, right, and I get that in the few times you've given that's kind of relief, it's been a standard condition and I think Jeff's condition about requiring the parking behind the front line of the house, or however you wanna phrase it, makes sense since we're saying it's part of the whole point. You know, my guess is that this will be grant, this will be taken care of in eighteen to twenty-four months, maybe less, maybe tomorrow, who knows? Um, I, I suspect by the time the house is built and she moves in, we'll be at the finish line on it. But, you know, what I don't wanna, what we're trying to avoid is waiting two years for that to happen. So I think in this particular case, because it's a small encroachment near thirty-foot vacant lot, that's gonna end up with a seventeen-foot setback. Uh, I hope that you would find your way to, to grant that permit.
You know, Linda, I, I think my only, maybe my advice would be is to look at cutting off two feet of the living room. It's a single-story mass, right?
Then you don't have the issue.
And you don't even have to be here.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't seem like, that doesn't seem like an impossible, uh, thing to happen. And then you don't even need relief. You put your window well in and, and it's done. I mean, it just.
Cause otherwise you lose the window well. No, it's not gonna affect that. Cause it, she's just talking about right here. She's just saying, right, you're saying if you cut off.
No, it fixes that problem, but the second one.
Well, then she'll wait till she gets to the property, which she said she was gonna do anyway. It's just, that would be my, the way I would approach it, because then you don't have anything holding you up. You get your CO when you need it. It's two and a half feet. It's, it's the depth of your fireplace. You know, it might be worth looking into because it just simplifies your, um, unknown and then the property's not tied up on, uh, in any way. You just.
Right, so then, then if the land, God forbid, takes another five years and you do need to sell or in the next, how, you know, however long, then you're, you're not, you're not, um, beholden to them and, right, um, that's a really great idea.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I appreciate that. I think we've talked with the architect that, about that a little. What, what I'd ask you to do, if you don't mind, is, you know, sort of vote in the variance and I'll, whatever your conditions are, we could then decide, my client can decide that she wanted, you know, which, which, where does she wanna go down? Yeah, so.
And Eleanor, have you ever seen one of these, um, for some reason not go through?
No.
And has anyone who, like the, a butter who's, um, you know, interested in buying it, then changed their mind and said, no, I don't want it?
Yes, actually, they find their rights to be other butter.
Or the town determines if they do need those.
That will happen most likely in short.
But there is, is there, like, say she, say she builds this two feet, whatever, and then, and then it comes down the pike and she says, well, I don't, I don't want it anymore. Even though she's in violation. Is there any teeth into that where she would have to purchase the property?
That's where you can put a condition that she has to merge with you, with your yard sale function. It's probably gonna be dollars worth, but.
No, I know. I mean, I've done some too, like, it's not that much money and whatever, but I'm just saying, like, you know, I, the neighbor's concerns are, I mean, her concerns are valid about the pro, I mean, it is sort of an unknown.
Because her plan is not only to cure this zoning issue, but also to build the cottage and any other development in, in the land that's gonna be acquired. She's highly incentivized to buy it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think of worst case.
It makes sense in some way to have it be, we can't grant a variance and then have her say, I don't wanna buy that property anymore.
Right.
That's not gonna, you know, that's not, I think that's a good point. Not that you would do that, because again, I think it's.
Right, it would be, it would be. Yeah, it would be really silly not to.
Given the value it'll add to the property.
It's probably gonna cost three thousand dollars.
Right. Yeah, I think, I mean, I think anytime anyone has an opportunity to purchase yard sale property, you should do it.
Yeah.
So I, I guess if you wanted to put that into a condition, that, that you could say that the, that if the applicant is presented with the opportunity to purchase the land or acquire the land from the town and waives that or declines it, that the variance would expire. So therefore she's incentivized because then she suddenly has a zoning violation. Is that something where you're going with that?
I guess. I mean, I'm just trying to.
You can't require her to buy it.
No, no, I know, I know. I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm just trying to express the.
She waives that right or declines that right. Well, the impact is, you know, get, your variance expires and then you now have a non-complacency and the zoning officer brings an enforcement action. You know, like, this mil, that won't happen, so I'm not worried about a condition that says, you better buy it.
Well, you don't, like, you wouldn't, I mean.
Yeah.
You wouldn't say it expires next year.
Right.
You'd say that you're, uh, the applicant not being compliant from.
Sure, yeah.
And I wouldn't want it to go to that ten years where it then becomes, um, grandfathered, you know, it's not a bad rap.
Right, we could waive, waive the grandfather.
There's a lot of conditions on this one.
I know. It's very complicated.
Guys are.
We just cut off two and a half, two and a half feet.
The way I look at this is, would, would we, would we have granted this if this, it's not a red herring, but this street purchase?
No.
Yeah.
It means this would, you know, so even though it might be a one percent chance that this doesn't happen, it's a one percent chance.
Right, that's what I was sort of getting at.
You know, I guess that's how I look at it. And I don't, why wouldn't, because I would.
That's why I was asking Eleanor to, about the ones that we've done before, because.
I mean, because we have done it before. I mean, it would, would have been that case on, um, not sixty-two Wall Street, it was granted. It's not like this would be the first time it would happen.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're.
But this is a setback thing.
That if, if the applicant declines or waives the land, that that would, that would have it, that would be a non-compliance or, or that if the, um, was, uh, uh, that the applicant would not assert, um, grandfathering, um, although I'm pretty sure that the ten years, the ten-year-old doesn't apply when you're acting under a special perimeter variance. It only applies essentially for non-permitted work. Is that right?
I mean, I don't know, how, how do you guys feel about this? Just the, because.
I'm kind of, honestly, I'm kind of conflicted because if we sit here and we make a path for her to get this, uh, down the line, did we just open ourselves up for, let's say, Stephen to come back and argue that there is a legitimate hardship now because everything didn't go the way it was supposed to and now she's gotta move the house back and then we're looking at, that's, that, my mind would be a legitimate hardship.
Doesn't it make sense to continue and have you look at the possibility of reducing the width of that, that family room? Because it doesn't, it, it's, it's a complicated issue and I, it, it seems like, because, I mean, Wall Street was a little bit of ground coverage. This is in a setback, which makes it a little bit more complex.
Yeah, and I also feel like the applicant is a little, you know, it seems like you're a little conflicted about what you should do and you don't want, cause if we go ahead and grant this and you build and then there's an issue, it seems like you have concerns about what would happen, you being not able to sell if you need to. So maybe we should continue and have, you guys can have some more conversations about that, but I, I, I think Lisa's, um, suggestion of trying to, you know, cut in, bring that wall in and then you could have your window well without.
Well, just nip and tuck a little bit, get a little closer to the setback, come in, you know, you know, I think you could take six inches out of the kitchen, a foot out of this, come into the setback a little bit more, you know, from the driveway and you could probably do it and be compliant.
Yeah.
And it would just simplify your life. You don't wanna have a property that's encumbered by variance if you don't have to. So, I mean, I, I just think it's worth investigating because it sounds like the variance relief on this would be so complicated and I don't know that even if we conditioned it, are we comfortable doing the conditions today without putting a lot of thought into it? So you're not gonna get your approval today anyway, so.
All right, well, we could, we could do that. I mean, if that's what you're telling us.
Yeah.
I think my client was hoping to get a choice of this is what the variance would look like and, and then she could decide to do it or not do it, but.
Well, I mean, we can, we did talk about a bunch of conditions that, you know, might be on it, so you could talk that over with Stephen and, um, also go to your architect and talk about the window well being over the property line and bringing that in and, um, and then, and then we can talk, then we can, you know, if those are cleaned up and you have, and there's a more clear path, then we can get to variance hopefully next time, or not.
Okay, thank, listen, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, um, so we should, so someone wanna make a motion to continue this to in the next meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Anyone second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah.
You're welcome.
Is it twice or once?
So. So I didn't end up going.
Oh, you did, yeah.
No, because, um, oh, you were wrong? I didn't end up going because I looked, I, I looked at the agenda. I looked at the agenda, the, I have notes on it somewhere. I looked at the agenda and made notes and it didn't, Jim, I didn't wanna make you vote, it's gonna be great. No, I don't know. It went to eleven last time and it didn't seem like, um, the one that I was, the one that I thought that we were the most interested in wasn't on there to be discussed, which was. Uh, I don't know now. But anyway, there's another meeting anyway.
They didn't get to it.
They didn't get to it and there's another meeting. There's two, on February twenty-first and then March eleventh, um, where they're gonna continue the discussion anyway, so. If anybody wants to go, I went to the one that was.
I went to the first one for a little while.
I was too excited. Well, I stayed till the end and I took a lot of notes and it was interesting and whatever, but, um, I hope the pool's been looking.
Have I talked about that one?
I talked about the pool thing. Can we talk about this right now?
It's not only agenda, so.
Should we adjourn?
Adjourn? Okay, so, um. I would just say if anyone could go to one of those meetings, it's good to go and listen because it, it will impact us, the whole thing.
Maybe just sign up for a large, find a board, which has, you can sign up for them all the time, so.
It's a good idea.
So motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So our next regular meeting is March fourteen?
Yes, as, uh, all those in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.